Welcome, everybody, to the November 20th, 2017 regularly scheduled Midland Public Schools Board of Education meeting. At this time, if everyone would please turn off their cellphones. Otherwise, it interferes with our television feed. And if everyone would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Scott, if you would please take role.
Of course. President Bransett.
Here.
Vice President Singer. Treasurer Frazee.
Here.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Friddell.
Here.
All right. Everyone is here tonight. Welcome, everybody. All right, moving into Item 2, which is our Consent Agenda. 2.1 is approval of the regular meeting minutes from our October 16th, 2017 meeting. 2.2 is the following persons who are recommended for employment for this school year. 2.3 are the following staff members who are announced their resignations with the effective dates noted. 2.4 is approval of the payment of the school system's bills for the month of September, as listed. And 2.5 are legal invoices for payment. This time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Items 2.1 through 2.5 on the consent agenda.
Support.
Moved by Pam, support by Scott. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Right, the Consent Agenda passes. Moving into Item 3, which is Board of Education Matters: Presentations to the Board. We'll do the shining stars.
And our first shining star is Julie Villano. Julie would come up. I don't really see Julie. There she is, hiding back there. Come on, you gotta stand next to me, Julie. Don't be shy.
I love this.
Let me read a little bit about Julie here. Julie began her employment with Midland Public Schools in 1995 as a 3rd grade classroom teacher at Plymouth Elementary School. In 1997, she began teaching at Jefferson Middle School. During her almost 20 years at Jefferson, she also served as an assistant softball coach, co-activities director, tennis coach, interim moral advisor, and teacher leader.
You dug this.
In 2015, Julie provided administrative support following a vacancy to the Jefferson Assistant Principals' Promotion. In 2016, Julie joined the HH Dow High Charger Staff as an Assistant Principal. The position continues to hold today. Julie has bachelor's degrees and master's degree from Saginaw Valley State University. Julie was nominated for her shining star by an educational colleague from a partner organization. Among their comments were the following: "Julie has been overwhelmingly accepting and helpful in transitioning my students to Dow High. She has been a source of resolution when conflicts arise. She has offered many times to assist when it becomes necessary." Students with moderate to severe autism come with some very challenging barriers to learning and being with their peers, but she has always been tolerant and seeks out opportunities to say hello to the entire classroom. Her kindness is often remarked upon by staff. She does not reserve it for MPS students only. She is an example of how administrators can make a school feel more welcoming and inclusive. Congratulations, Julie.
Thank you very much.
That, and that's it. I want to say thank you.
Thanks, Scott, and Julie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
We have two more shining stars, because we have like a co-one. And hopefully, I don't murder their names. I have keys here, so hopefully, I don't do this wrong. First one is Heather Hoppinjohn. If Heather would come up. Did I do it right, Heather? And the second one is Sally Matula. Sally would come up as well. Ouch. Hi. And they have a partner with her, and that's partly why they are here this evening. Let me read a little bit about them and what has occurred. First, Heather. Heather began her employment with MPS in 2015 as a paraprofessional at Chestnut Hill Elementary, where she supports special education students. Before moving to the Midland area, Heather ran her own daycare center. Sally began her employment with MPS in 2016 as a paraprofessional at Chestnut Hill Elementary, where she supports special education students. Before coming to MPS, Ms. Matula taught special education for many years. She has her bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University and a master's degree from the University of Wisconsin-Plattville. Heather and Sally were nominated for the shining star by an MPS colleague. Among her comments were the following: "These two paraprofessionals are both assigned to a student with a cognitive impairment. In addition to that, the student has a trach, which is a huge medical concern. These two ladies have been through numerous trainings and have collaborated with administration, teachers, nurse, and parents in a very caring, nurturing, and professional manner. They are attentive to the student and handle any and all medical issues that arise at school. They have stepped into a position where they were not formally trained yet. They have shown grace and compassion. I am very lucky to have them as part of my team." Congratulations, Heather and Sally. We look at this. There's Heather's, and there's Sally's. And I got two envelopes for you. And here, for your teachers. Do you want to carry one for them? And you all can go up and shake the board member's hands.
You are a lucky girl. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucky girl, huh? Congratulations.
It's a good part of our job.
I know, I know. I love this part. All right. Item 3.2, for information.
So we have another presentation, and I'll introduce Penny Miller Nelson, which most of you know. She's a coordinator of our secondary instruction, and she will introduce the rest of her team, which she's bringing with her tonight.
Good evening. While she's doing that, on behalf of our work group, thank you for this opportunity to be here, to provide you not only with an update about the activities of our work group, but to talk with you about this really important topic: the mental health, overall social, emotional, and behavioral well-being of our students. I'm sure the same happens to you. Those of us involved with educating students receive many communications from professional organizations, research institutes. Not a week goes by where I don't get a communication about this topic. It is part of our national conversation right now, both for students and adults. So, we're excited to be here to talk about this and share with you some of the actions we're taking. You know, we can't do this alone as a school system. We're well-positioned. I think we're ideally positioned to tackle this topic, but we really need our community partners, and this work group is a perfect example of how we're coming together to address this. Hey, I have the controls. How about that? Typical of our great community, we had the foresight to come together. Key community leaders came together well over a year ago. Mr. Sherrill was part of that initial group, to really talk about what's happening in our community around the topic of mental health. We assessed our needs, identified critical gaps we have in services, and through the leadership of the Midland Area Community Foundation, a leadership team was formed. And they dispatched several smaller work groups to tackle some of these important topics: jail diversion, suicide prevention, public awareness, and the topic of our group, which is the mental health of school-aged children. So, we're really fortunate that there's a community focus on this, and our work group serves at the direction of that larger group. We've created a work plan with very focused action items to be able to accomplish this. And again, through Mr. Sherrill's involvement, I think early on, this team recognized that the best path forward, the most direct path forward, was to partner with schools, rather than just tell schools what they should do to really become part of what's happening, get input, gather information, and then take action based on that. And that's exactly what we've done. Our work group is small but mighty. We have some really amazing professionals with lots of important letters behind their names, who really are steeped in this profession, in helping people who are in a mental crisis or have social, emotional, and behavioral needs. And so, we're really fortunate to partner with these community organizations. This group is amazing. We meet twice a month to stay in tune with our action plan, to gauge our success. We've been very proactive. We've obtained over $50,000 in grant funds to support the variety of activities that you'll hear about tonight. And we have great leadership. Anne Date from Partners in Change here in town really is our leader. We meet regularly at her facility, and she keeps us on track, certainly. So, we're thankful for that. A lot of great things happening, and with me are two of our team members who can certainly speak to these better than I can. So, I'd like to introduce Jackie Warner, who comes to us as a youth intervention specialist from Circuit Court. She's in our schools a lot, working with students and families, and we really appreciate her service. And Kristi Haynstock is also with us. She is one of our own here at Midland Public Schools. She is a PhD-licensed psychologist and works for us. So, I'm going to turn it over to them. Thank you.
So, here are some statistics. You look at 1 out of every 5 children are impacted by mental health issues, but only 20% ever receive treatment. That means 80% don't. And of those 20% that do receive services, 75% do so in the school, feeling like that's their best option. So, 30 to 50% of teens will experience mental health issues before adulthood, and I think that number just continues to increase as we feel a lot of pressure in our community and jobs and different things that adults are going through, then it goes on to their kids a lot of times. So, the translation would be, let's say we count 7,000 students, 1,400 students that have mental health needs in our building, since it's just a guess, and only 280 of those would receive treatment. So, we're saying, where can we get the treatment? We need to get that to the schools. What we know, schools are tasked with educating students whose basic mental health and health all kind of go together, well-being. Their needs are not being met. And then, feedback from school staff. We have great staff, yet they're not trained in some of these big things. And we're seeing a huge increase in anxiety, depression, self-harm, suicidal thinking, substance use, trauma. That's one of our big things that we're seeing. And the counselors are very regularly reporting that across the board. And these things are not unique to Midland Public Schools. I'm in the county. They're in every school in our state right now, in our country. And then, the school counselors are trying to meet the needs, but they have to have additional support. They need help. They need to feel like they can have some direction, because their training isn't in mental health a lot of times. So, if we think to ourselves, picture if right before you came into this meeting, your significant other or best friend just said, "Done with you. I'm out. I don't want to talk to you anymore." How would you feel about coming in and being focused on the meeting and paying attention, right? And we can all relate. We've had days, hard things that have happened, and our kids are coming into the schools, into the classrooms, and they're seeing parents fight at home, some parents going off to jail, they're seeing parents use substances. They are going through these anxiety, depression kinds of things and trying to be educated. And so, without treating that part of things, the kids will really struggle with how to even manage the classroom. So, some of the things that we have done already with our group: strengthen the relationships between our community partners, resources, schools. Schools do know who to call, which is wonderful, and then, our community has really stepped in. The community doesn't get how things happen with the schools. They just think, "Well, can't you run groups all day long?" And so, we've had to kind of teach each that way. Collaboration with the counselors. We've tried to give them some screening tools to be able to use. And then, a huge part is hosting workshops on these topics to try to get them the training that they're so desperately requesting. So, we have the Positive Alternatives to School Suspension Program that started through this GAPS committee. And again, we talked about the funding that we've received. It's been a huge help for us being able to start these things. But our middle school students are able to, instead of staying home, playing video games or even having to go to parents' workplaces, they are able to go to this program and learn skills. Part of what we want to make sure we're doing is skill-building. We have facilitated Mind Up, the pilot program, in 3rd grade classrooms in the county. And so, every 3rd grade had at least one class that had Mind Up, and then, one or two classes that did not. We compared statistics. Many teachers would just rave about, "Wow, this has been so helpful to be able to teach." I don't know if you've heard of the word mindfulness, but we want to teach youth and even adults how to use more mindfulness. And then, we've talked about that. Just elevated the conversation.
All right. So, this group is powerful. They've done a lot. I joined the group late. I joined the group about this time, maybe into the spring, the spring of last year. And the drive and the motivation and the dedication of this group and the work that they have done is phenomenal. But the question is, where do we go next after Pass and Mind Up and all of these things that are really, really meeting the needs of the kids that are showing the greatest mental health needs? Well, we've kind of looked at it this way, and this is similar to an academic division of supports. The group is focused primarily on children with the greatest needs, those at the top that are showing the greatest needs. But we know that if we continue to only focus on these kids in crisis, if we focus all of our efforts on the kids showing the greatest need, the number showing this level of need will remain the saner go up. So, we need to take it lower. We need to focus more on all kids. We need to do this by railing support. We know that as a group of 12, as powerful as this group of 12 may be, supporting all kids universally, consistently, in the area of mental health, social, emotional, behavioral skills, takes more than 12. So, next, what are we doing? We're trying to rally the support and efforts from as many Midland County districts, administrators, school teams, supporters, parents, relevant community partners, as possible, to help shift the focus to supporting all kids, those at the bottom of the triangle and up. We need to build a stronger foundation under the roof. We have so far focused on building from the top down, and we know that we need to build from the top up. So, looking at universally, what can we do? Like Jackie said, there's been many national, state, local initiatives focused on mental health. There's many buzzwords: social, emotional, learning, positive behavior interventions and supports, multi-tiered systems of supports, many acronyms, many ways of describing and talking about how we want to build these supports in our schools. But the biggest thing our work group wants you to leave here tonight knowing is that supporting the mental health and behavior and emotional and social needs of kids is not just a thing. It's not an initiative. It's not something that we can pile on top of the many other initiatives that are going on in our buildings. It's a mentality. It's a philosophy. It's a feeling. It's not a thing. So, as educators and supporters of children in education, we first have to look at ourselves and make sure, are we showing up every day? Are we presenting ourselves? Are we teaching and modeling skills, academic skills, social skills, emotional skills, behavioral skills, every day in ways that promote a positive and welcoming culture and systems of support in our school buildings, in all of our school buildings? So, I want you to think about this. Just as we teach our children all of the academic skills and prerequisites that they need to be college and career-ready, we also need to teach the social, emotional, and behavioral skills and resilience that they'll need to be successful in college, career, and life in general. So explicitly, teaching and supporting these skills is associated with many, many great things, countless great things: increased self-esteem, more positive and respectful peer and adult interactions, less emotional distress, fewer problem behaviors, and improved academic performance. Further, there's recent legislation and educational initiatives. For example, the new seclusion and restraint laws, restorative justice, many new buzzwords, many new legislative demands that reiterate this need for universal emotional and behavioral supports for all of our kids. Don't get me wrong, good things are happening in schools. They're happening every day in our schools, in our district. In one of our middle schools, they're having morning meetings and words of the day where they talk about these traits, these skills that help build strong character and strong people. The zones of regulation in the Mind Up curriculum have been implemented with many subsets of our elementary kids. But the thing is, these things are happening in pockets rather than universally. And they're not necessarily consistent, and they're not necessarily embedded with the many other initiatives and programs and things that we have going on in our schools every day. So, specific to Midland Public Schools, take the primary years in international back glory programs. The PYP and the IAB programs are something that we pride ourselves on. They drive our academic curriculum, our structure within our schools. It guides the way we deliver instruction and academic content within our schools. But what I want you to think specifically about is that learner profile, those 10 traits associated with PYP and IB that we believe and that PYP and IB schools believe are critical for students to become responsible members of local, national, and global communities. This learner profile in our schools can and already has, to some extent, provided some impetus and some awareness of the importance of embedding and intertwining these universal social, emotional, and behavioral supports for our kids. But food for thought, food for thought. These 10 traits, we actually evaluate all of our students on these 10 traits every marking period. We assign them descriptors of progress to achieve, developing, not yet, just as we do those academic skills that we assess them on every marking period. But when you think about the academic skills, we have core curriculum for that. We have reading, writing, math. We have core curriculum to teach those things. So, in essence, that applies that we value and teach these behavioral traits, these 10 characteristics on the learner profile, the same way that we value reading, math, and writing. But I ask you this: do we have that same core curriculum for these social, emotional, and behavioral skills? And is it delivered universally and consistently to all of our kids? So, that's our drive. That's our focus. How can we really get all of these supports in place for our kids to help develop the whole child? Not just the academic piece, not just the students that we want to leave college and career-ready academically, but are we also looking at the social, emotional, and behavioral aspects of those kids? And are we teaching and recognizing, acknowledging, reinforcing the development of those skills and of the whole child in the same extent? This is a mission. This is a feeling. This is a culture. So, my question to you and our work group's question is, how can we unite as Midland Public Schools educators, stakeholders, in achieving this mission? There are many, many resources out there. There's state and national grants. There's onsite support. There's training and coaching programs. There's many products out there being sold to help get this in place in our schools. But resources only can produce meaningful and sustainable outcomes if fully supported by not only school board, administration, all stakeholders, but 80% of staff. The research says that unless 80% of staff buy into this vision, this goal, that resources are not going to be helpful. We have to own this. It has to be a feeling. And we know, as a work group of 12, we can't create this feeling and this culture across our county by ourselves. So, that's why we're here today. We're here asking you, and we're also asking district administrators, and we're encouraging teachers and support staff and parents and stakeholders, join us and help us really bring to light the need for this, the importance of this, and the universality of providing these supports. So, with that, any questions for us?
I have a few questions for you.
Yes.
That's okay. Kristi, if I read that right, in one of the first couple slides, it sounded like 80% of our students are either untreated or unidentified. Is that a national or is that a local statistic? And if it's national, where do you think we fall, kind of along those lines?
So, we received those statistics from the University of Michigan, and they were looking at national statistics. My guess is, with Midland, we're a little lower than that. That's why I couldn't give you exact numbers, because we haven't studied that.
Okay. In your opinion, I guess, based on everything that you guys have done, what else can we do as a board, as an administrative team, to help support you guys in terms of training staff to identify and deal with some of these issues? And adding to that question, you mentioned at the end of your comments, you need an 80% buy-in from staff. Where are we on that scale as well? In terms of buy-in, from your perspective? Penny, number, teachers that we've trained so far, counselors? You might know that off the top of your head.
Actually, we've hosted several trainings, and they've been voluntary opportunities after school or on weekends. As you know, our professional learning time as a district is coveted, and we allocate that between buildings and districts well in advance and have plans in place. So, it isn't something that we are able to do as a district in terms of allocating professional development time for this. We have had probably at least 50 teachers participate in a variety of workshops from Youth Mental Health First Aid, which is a national curriculum. We had a handful of teachers complete SAFE Talk the afternoon of November 7th, which is a suicide prevention program. And we are sending teams of three from each of our secondary buildings, as well as some of our special services staff, to a two-day suicide prevention workshop, national curriculum called ASSIST. So, I feel like we are doing what we can within the time allocation we have. You know, the other part of me knows the demands we have on our principals and teachers and curriculum office staff or the other initiatives we have in place. So, I'm not sure we're in a position where we can fully devote a year's worth of professional learning time to this. I think we're going to continue. I know our work group is committed to continuing offering these trainings and just really encouraging teachers to attend.
So, Scott, timeline a little bit. Jack, about a year and a half ago, we began to form, and I was the original contact and sat in several of these meetings. It was fully supportive. I hope they found that to be true, but they were starting to talk way out of my area. So, as I do very well, I delegate. And so, Penny, who I give huge kudos to, has done a tremendous job of taking that leadership role over and sending her to that committee. And so, I would say, we are still in the early stages. We're priming the pump and getting more people on board, but remember, pretty good progress for a year, year and a half. The passion of these people over here are incredible. Anne Date and her husband were mentioned up there. I would tell you, they've given us free resources of time and their employees' time, and maybe even some curriculum and books, I believe, that are probably in the thousands of dollars. The partners that we got in this community are incredible, and it shows on this side. Their passion, and I think is why we've got 50 teachers to go, sometimes unpaid, on weekends, evening. We've got some work still to do there, but I think we're priming the pump and we're on a good start, anyway.
And I would undoubtedly say that 80% of teachers, probably even pushing 100% of teachers and staff in this district, acknowledge the need for this.
Correct.
There is definitely a buy-in to the need. The how-to is the challenging part. How do we do this amongst all of the other things that we're asked in a school day? How do we balance this amongst so many other things? And that's why the message is, this is not a thing. It's a feeling. It's something that we have to work together and strive for every day.
Can I ask you just a follow-up to that, and then I'll pass the floor? As far as the working together, is there anything being done to train or involve students in identifying peers that may then be able to go to somebody and say, "Hey, my friend, I think needs help or needs to talk to somebody"?
Yes. There are many initiatives and many programs and many ways of doing that, both within our schools and within our community. Variety was okay to say, a variety of things supported and developed by the work group and more than that, beyond the work.
So, okay, they say it's been around for a little while. We weren't using it real well. They took it and began to help us at least get awareness of it out there and beginning to use. Maybe not so much identifying other kids, but Mind Up curriculum, which we piloted, and I'm not sure where you're going on that at this time, was to keep kids mentally healthy and handle the stresses of life that get us to there. So, that, being proactive versus reactive, I think you mentioned, Jack, or Kristi, has really been the goal of this group. Well, I really appreciate your time and what you guys have done, and with that, all.
So, I mean, knowing the challenge that we have with so much on everybody in the district, is there another community or another district you're modeling after? Or do you feel you're trailblazing on this one? So, you know, to look at other communities and how they're approaching this, you know, situation, since every community is dealing with this situation?
Yes. There are many, many, many out there that are tackling this. Some because legislation is in part requiring that, as part of the MTSS or multi-tiered support systems. But within Michigan and districts that I've been in, they've tackled it from a variety of different angles. Beyond the state of Michigan, there are many, many models of how to do this very effectively. But the big message is, each district is its own district and has its own needs, although the general idea is the same. In order for us to support kids in a way that's genuine and true to our community, the way that we do that needs to be developed and supported within our community. So, there are many models out there, but I think Midland and Midland County schools have continued to kind of work on, what's the best for our kids? How do we best support our kids? So, there are many that we...
So, you know, to look at other communities and how they're approaching this, you know, situation, since every community is dealing with this situation.
Yes, there are many, many, many out there that are tackling this. Some because legislation is in part requiring that, as part of the MTSS or multi-tiered support systems. But within Michigan and districts that I've been in, they've tackled it from a variety of different angles. Beyond the state of Michigan, there are many, many models of how to do this very effectively. But the big message is each district is its own district and has its own needs, although the general idea is the same. In order for us to support kids in a way that's genuine and true to our community, the way that we do that needs to be developed and supported within our community. So there are many models out there, but I think Midland and Midland County Schools have continued to kind of work on what's the best for our kids, how do we best support our kids? So there are many that we can look after, but it's really coming from the inside out rather than the outside in.
We visited the University of Michigan mental, tell me, Jackie, do you remember the full name of it? But they are work partnering with schools, and they've partnered with some schools, Dexter, I'm thinking, and Ann Arbor Schools for sure. And so they're slightly ahead of us in that partnership with University of Michigan, what they're doing there. So there are some good models very close to us to begin to look at, so.
For the last several years, or for a number of years, I've heard reports, and we were just recently at the school board conference, about secondary schools and starting later in the day, and they're finding that that makes positive impacts on the kids in relation to suicide anxiety because of their, you know, their natural teen clock. Do you have any comments on that? I'm just kind of curious.
I don't know any statistics, but I've heard that a lot, that they're saying kids' brains, they need to have more sleep in the morning, and so to start later would be very important. Our work group has not tackled that yet, but that could be one of the things we look at.
Where are you in your grant cycle? Is this the end of the $50,000 grant, or is this for the whole year?
Actually, we just obtained these grant funds. We've used them to pay for the training that we've done so far, including that December ASSIST training. We have plans for that as well. Some of that grant money is being used to run cognitive-based therapy groups at our two high schools. We're working with community partners. Our schools have identified students who have a need for this, and Jackie's been working closely with our assistant principals and counselors to facilitate that process. And so part of that grant money is being used to offset the cost of that. So we're early. To answer your question, we're kind of early in this.
But Penny, going to PASS as well, because some grant funds are there as well, and I've written, wrote to you about PASS, but Penny can explain, it kind of came from this work group.
Well, it did, as well as part of your vision for what we should be doing as a piece of restorative discipline practices. So it's only happening right now in our two middle schools, when a student is referred to the office, the assistant principal has a conversation with that student and makes a determination whether the PASS program would be a good fit. And it's an alternative. It's an alternative to out-of-school suspension. As Jackie said, we know students go home sometimes and aren't in the best environments or left on their own. And so this is a way for them to build skill, to have an opportunity to work on some homework. And where possible, we are trying to weave in a community service portion, which does lend more to that restorative piece. We just are meeting soon, next week, I think, to talk about our status of that. So far, great success. Our two middle schools have been tremendous in just stepping forward and giving this a try. We sort of built it as we went, which can be a little tough on those assistant principals in the moment, trying to shuffle the paper and check all the boxes. But I think it's really forcing a conversation between the assistant principal and the student to talk about what's best and try to move that student back into the right direction, where they're not making the same mistakes and they're building skills to do that. The work group would really love to see that scaled to high school. We're not sure that financially we can support that long-term, but we think that we can at least take the next step and begin using that in high school. And I think both of our high schools are excited to talk more about that.
Who works with those students then that are...
That's a great question. I can't believe I didn't even mention that. I'm so sorry. So we partner with The Rock, and Bev Wenzel helped create this program. They have trained staff who are there at the community center to greet these students. That's where the program is held. We provide a meal to those students and actually provide that service to the other students in the county, because all of the schools are partnering this and sending students, which makes it a really special opportunity. So yeah, they've helped create a curriculum that's used that is based on the skills that students need in the moment, based on their discipline infraction. And as I said, we keep improving it as we go, but The Rock has been a great partner in this.
So I have no concept on a daily basis, how many kids are in there?
Well, it's not necessarily day-to-day, and we certainly leave it to the assistant principal's discretion to know who best can take advantage of this program. I would say we've probably had 45 students access the program, or 45 incidences where students have utilized PASS already this school year. I can certainly supply you with the true and actual numbers after this meeting.
What have your results been from those 45 interactions?
Results in terms of...
With the kids, are they going back and are they heading down the right road?
Right.
Are they going back and still doing what put them there in the first place?
So that's a great question. That's one thing that we're grappling with in terms of measuring success. Certainly, if student A attends PASS and never has another discipline incident, that's success for us. But we also know that maybe what happened in this situation was a very different situation than their next discipline infraction. So it's hard to really track based on what we're considering, are there areas of skill building that are needed? Overall, our intent is to have less students out of a classroom, away from direct instruction and collaborative work with their peers in a classroom setting. So that's ultimately how we're going to measure it, is seeing a decrease in discipline overall.
Great.
Would you add anything to that?
I would just say, you know, with some kids, it takes 12 or 13 years to develop some of these behaviors, so to fix it in six hours in one day probably isn't going to happen.
Good point. So when you're referred, does that mean you'll only go to the program at The Rock for one day, or could it be over time?
It depends. Typically, what we're doing is, you know, we have pretty strict policies and practices of what you do and what the result is. And so again, assistant principals are working with students and families to make those decisions. A student can go there for multiple days, they can go there for one day. Or sometimes if it's a longer-term suspension, maybe they serve a few days at home and a few days at PASS. We're really seeing a combination of how we're using this.
One size doesn't fit all.
Right, right. Any other questions?
Do you have room for more? Are you finding yourself maxed out, or do you have room to take in? Do you have 100 more referrals tomorrow?
Well, Bev Wenzel has a real heart for this work, so she is always saying to us, we will take however many you send. Of course, there's some magic in the ratio you have of students to adults. And if we do scale up to high school, we want to be mindful of, you know, a potential sixth grader in the same space as a high schooler. So we do have to work through some of those logistics. Right now, we've never exceeded their capacity. She has a system where one staff member is always there, and one or two are on call as needed, based on the number of referrals for a particular day.
I really appreciate the connection with the learner profile and the PYP. One of the things that I was so excited about with the IB program and the PYP in elementary schools is that learner profile and how it does connect the social, emotional skills, strengths of kids, and I think that's a very positive direction for us to go. It's a good start anyway. Appreciate your help and all you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving into item 3.3 for action, summer tax collection request.
Good evening. As I do on an annual basis by state requirement, if we want the city to collect in the summertime, you have to pass the resolution before January 1st. Depending on that, as you know, we collect within the city of Midland, our taxes in both the summer and the winter tax collection. The other tax authorities throughout the county, we do just once during the winter, because they collect once. But since the city collects twice, we do that. It is helpful to us as far as, as you remember, Mike's talked numerous times about the low cash point. It usually happens in September, we're not getting cash payments. That's also the time that the first of the summer tax is coming. So it's a good thing for us to do. So it requires you to pass a resolution here, to ask the city of Midland to collect it for the summer, and then we in turn turn that on to the city for announcing that we're going to do that with them. So requires a vote on your part.
You have a resolution on the action item in front of you.
All right, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Okay. I move to approve the resolution certifying the tax rate that is to be levied in the summer of 2018 on the property of the school district within the city of Midland. A complete copy of the resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support. All right. Move by Scott, support by Mary. Is there any discussion on this? All right, seeing none, I think Cindy had thought we need a roll call vote on this.
It's best.
Given that, if you would, do the honors, please.
Of course. President Bransett.
Yes.
Vice President Singer.
Yes.
Treasurer Frazee.
Yes.
Member Baker.
Yes.
Member Blazy.
Yes.
Member Friedell.
Yes.
I also vote yes.
All right.
Seven yes votes.
Seven out of seven. Get out your checkbooks. Oh, I mean, just host that living in the city. All right, moving into 3.4 for action, property and casualty insurance. Back to you.
Again, this is our renewal of our property and casualty insurance for the district. Just a couple of items that I'll point out to you. If you see the listing of our contents, a year ago, that would have been about $4.7 million last. As you know, we brought on facilities, we've lost some facilities, kind of washed us out, but of course, what we just built and what we furnished, et cetera, content, the content that we're insuring is up above $4.7 million. The actual cost, $208,999, is about $700 more than a year ago, so very, very slight increase. On intensive purposes with the increase in what we're insuring, it's really not an increase, it's the same rate that we had a year ago. And always just list a few of the items there that the insurance policy covers.
We did this out a year ago, and we do every three or four years.
All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve item 3.4 for action, property and casualty insurance.
Support.
All right, move by Pam, support by Scott. Is there any discussion?
I had three questions, and all of them were answered by Bob and Mike, so I'm good.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Can you tell us what the previous policy, what it cost? I know you and I talked briefly about it before our meeting.
It was 208, 201, I think it was.
Okay, and then the years prior, you mentioned they were up.
Yeah, if you go back, especially before we started giving, taking buildings away, we would have been in about the 220s to 230s on a premium. So that, I'm trying to think back now, it's hard to believe with the bond, but as we've taken properties offline, if you will, where we don't have any buildings still standing there, it's come down a little.
So that was my point, is that it seems like a lot of money for a one-year policy, but there are savings.
Yep.
Built into that.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions.
All right.
I know we're only bidding it out every couple of years, but with the change in insurance right now, the things trending down in some of these for property, I would highly encourage that we would quote this out on a more frequent basis. But also, dealing with somebody like our local agent who's an independent, did they offer up a matrix of, a comparison of the vendors that they supply, that they support? You know, there's probably a dozen different companies that they represent or can sell as an independent agent. Did they bring forth a matrix to us as a comparison of how this would compare to other insurances that they represent?
They would give us the lowest quote with the vendors that they have and that they can provide, so they would go with the, I should always add, with the service that we want. I mean, you can, I could go in there and tell them I wanted a deductible of, you know, $500. They can insure anything, as you know. But with what our requirements are for deductible and the amount of coverage, replacement, et cetera, they will find from their vendors the lowest-cost vendors that we could use. So they don't present necessarily, when I'm talking to them, the other vendors that are, that they access. They would give me the ones that present the lowest policy in that classification, whatever it happens to be.
So is this the same company as we had last year?
The biggest part of the policy is, I don't know if I want to tell you that the different smaller parts are there. It's not something that I would always ask which company that we're with. The biggest part of this, the buildings and content is the same. I think the auto's the same too, because that's one of the two biggest parts.
But they did vote that out to other people during this, before this?
Yeah, whenever you go back to them, especially the independents, like you said, if they're an independent agent, they go just back like they're finding that for you at the time. So it's not, just as they would when it was a big bid, opened up to all the companies a year ago, they'll do the same thing every time, but with their, I guess I'd call it, group of vendors that they can access. Which as we've worked with them, we find that sometimes it's interesting. Some do have exclusive ones. There's a lot of overlap. It's kind of interesting to watch how they put it together, because a lot of our independent local agents have access to some of the same.
Same vendors. So we'll get different prices with different vendors, same company. It's kind of interesting.
All right.
I'm sure Brad's done.
Oh, are you done, Brad?
The issue of our coverage, did that, our issue with the Jefferson pool, did that come up in conversation in renewal of this policy?
It's, if you remember, there are three locations that do not have flood insurance on them. And so we certainly could add it, it's always at a cost, so we did discuss it again, but those are the ones that they have for years, long before my time, carved out because of the cost associated, if you wanted to do. The one thing they did, because I asked in particular about Jefferson Pool when I was in there, they are pretty sure that even with flood insurance, we would have problems because technically, it came from below the pool, it was the underground part, and flood insurance typically does not cover underground. So the problem would be, they said they've run into this with other people that had flood insurance, is like where we housed all the pool equipment that all was flooded, and that's where the hydraulic pressure came from underneath, that most likely, even with flood insurance, wouldn't have been covered under the flood insurance. I did ask them about that. We did also look back at history too, just to make sure, because I did ask them once to say, well, why'd they cover it up? This is the first time that they can see any place, as long as they've been our agent, that we've actually had a flood at one of those places. And like I said, when I asked this time, they thought it might not be covered. Pretty sure with their experience at the places, because it was under, it came from underground to damage.
I guess I'd only have one other request, is that if a line item like this, I'd like to have the backup in the packet of what the quote was. Because it's in the agenda, actually, and there's not any backup. It could be from the Ider's letterhead, whatever it may be. I'd like to see something in our packet for that instead of in the agenda. That'd be my last comment.
Like the whole policy? Do you want all the policies there?
No, it should be a policy summary. It should be a three- to five-page deal max of the whole thing that would represent the $210,000, $210,000. It might even be shorter than that. Might be two or three pages of the full.
Well, Brad, and I'm not sure we're talking the same, but we have it broke down though for you, and did you see it that way?
Right.
We have building and contents, and we have equipment breakdown each price, violent event response. Did you see all that?
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'm sure that Bob has a quote, and or he can get the actual executive summary of the quote, have that as part of this.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Property and casualty insurance for next year. All right, moving into item four, request to address the board. Is anyone here who would like to address the board this evening? No? Are you sure? We'd love to hear from you.
Yes.
You have one?
Put your hand up.
Excellent.
Yeah, come on up.
Come on up.
Extra credit right there.
Yeah.
So as of now, there's like a law...
Oh, wait, I think, we need to start, we have a, yeah. So you need to state your name and your address, and then, just so you know, everybody gets five minutes.
Okay. I'm Haley Sibrock, and my address is 4314 Huron Drive. And right now, there's this, like, a law, a bill going through the House and like the Congress about like concealed carry. And I was, like, if that passes, I was wondering, like, because I know Midland High got some new security measures, and I know, like, how, like, we don't have like metal detectors or anything, like, how is that going to protect us from someone that's like able to carry a gun, like, in places like school now?
Very good question.
Very good question. I would tell you that we need to be very proactive and talk to our legislators about that, because it's not done yet. If you recall, it's made out of the Senate to go to the House. If you recall, it's made out of the Senate to go to the House, so when they come back from Thanksgiving break, they'll take action on that. And then it has to go to the governor, and if you recall, this legislation came up a couple of years ago, similar, and the governor vetoed it. And so I don't think we're done fighting the legislation, because from, at least from a superintendent's viewpoint, I don't think it's good legislation. But if it does occur, we've been under this somewhat before with open carry. We would go into a secure mode at that point, if we know there is a carrier in the building, and we would restrict that carrier to the office. And if they're there to see somebody, we would bring that person to the office to see them. So we do have some procedures in place that we've used in the past, but yet, still yet to be seen where that legislation goes and where our ability to control or not control. I believe it should be local control and not state mandated control over this, but that's my opinion at this point. So if you feel strongly about this, I would encourage you to write or call your legislators.
And Mike, just to add to that, if I understand the way that it's being proposed, we would still, as a district, have the ability to maintain, say that we're weapon-free, and then we could just say that if there is a person carrying, I think we could identify them as just being a trespasser and have them.
No, no, that's right now where we are, and so the current legislation would allow open carry, except for, there was Ann Arbor Schools restrict it because they said they had local control over the issue, and they won in court. And so over the last, it'll hold me to the six months to a year, we've been operating as schools that we have the ability to restrict as weapons free as its own. And so that's the reaction to today, to the legislation, is that they're coming back and saying, well, we're going to close open carry, but concealed carry, and by the way, no local policy can overrule our policy, and so we would not be able to restrict it being on our campuses. What we could do is how do we procedurally handle that? And my fear isn't so much actually the date with the school, because we're pretty secure. We don't let a whole lot of people walk down our hallways anymore, and we hold them at the office for the most part. My fear is stadiums, basketball games, those type of things where you already fight some emotionalness at times at that. And so I think we should point those issues out to our legislators, which I have written, wrote to you guys many times, and I have, and unsuccessfully at this point. So I think for me and our professional organizations, we're now pinning some hope and some talk on the governor.
You all have voices too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and you're really affected by this, so please contact our state legislatures and express your concern.
That was a great question. Thanks for coming up.
Thank you very much.
Okay, one brave soul, who's next?
All right, moving on to item five, which is our curriculum instruction and assessment. So I guess there were minutes?
I do, I have.
Okay.
See, we met on Monday, October 16th, at 2:15. We talked about one-on-one devices, nitro five. Dave Vetic and Melissa Toner presented logistics on training efforts related to the kindergarten through fifth grade, one-to-one device rollout in September. A discussion also ensued on the future of one-to-one devices, including digital intervention, online curriculum, and potential bring-your-own-device policies. In addition to the discussion, the committee toured several classrooms to see the devices in action. We adjourned at 3:30. It was a great day at Central Park Elementary, and it was wonderful to go into the classrooms and see how they were using devices. And what we saw were different engagements wherever you looked. And it was, you know, in some classrooms, you would see the teachers working with their students, with, using devices and instruction. And other areas, you would see two or three students working in front of a monitor together on some kind of projects, and the others were, I think we saw robotics? Did we see robotics in there in that date too? So it was a lot of different engagement with technology. It was a great, great tour.
The kids were working on, in one of the classrooms, they were working individually, and that gave the teacher an opportunity to work one-on-one with a student, maybe for, for some additional help in something. It was, it was really nice, and the kids were really engaged in what they were doing, and had their little headsets on, and so they were working individually, but could be listening to stories or reading along, it's really nice.
The other thing I noticed is the teachers with the mics and how easy it was to hear no matter where you were in that classroom or right outside the classroom.
All right, thank you very much. Moving into item six, which was our FFO, our last meeting. Patrick.
We met November 13th. Present were myself, Angela, Pam, Mike, Bob, and Daryl from Barton Mallow. We discussed a few topics. The first was bond issues. Daryl reviewed and discussed with the FFO committee the current bid schedule in Series One Bond Financials awarded and remaining to date. Second were finance and operations topics. Bob and Mike reviewed and discussed the following items with the committee. Number one, September financials. Number two, the purchase of, purchase of the district's property and casualty insurance, which we discussed tonight at length. Number three, summer tax collection request to the city, which we discussed earlier. Four, preliminary discussion of the Midland County Wide Enhancement Millage Renewal, 2018. Probably be an important topic coming up here. And number five, the Michigan School of Finance Research Collaborative Resolution. Our next meeting is Monday, December 11th, at 5 o'clock.
All right, excellent, thank you very much. Moving into 6.2, did you want to?
I have for information to start with.
Long list.
Totals of $6,873.85. It is quite a long list, because there are numerous ones that make that one up. You'll notice they kind of run the gamut. There's a fair amount of robotics in here, but you'll see from different organizations, but also, we had an award winner, Beth Quinby, at Chestnut Hill, that gave some money there. We have some personal donations to the Science Olympia, and to the Jefferson team. J-PAC, the Jefferson Parent Advisory Committee, has a list, a very typical start of the year to see PTOs and groups kind of having a way to hand out what money they've raised. See that, and of course, also from the First Robotics Group, the Great Lakes Bay Region, with some money to help some groups out in the Seabird PTO, and you'll see the Battle of Books down there. So that's for information. 6.3, it requires action because of the size of the gift, $75,000. It was given to the Central Park Elementary Student and Family Enhancement Fund, and that's from Memorial Presbyterian Church, their next-door neighbors. So because of the size of that gift, it requires your approval.
All right, a wonderful, wonderful gift. At this time, I'll entertain a motion?
A move that we approve, item 6.3, a gift totaling $75,000 from Memorial Presbyterian Church.
Support.
All right, move by Scott, support by Mary. Any discussion other than the obvious, wow?
Yeah. How generous.
I'm wondering what will that, the $75,000 go for?
That was, they approached us last spring, Brian and I, and Bridget and Shannon met with them, and we decided that it was going to be needed to give opportunities to those students who couldn't afford things such as robotics or after-school programming, that nature, I think would sum it up, huh, Brian? And so that is where that money will lie, and Bridget and Shannon have the ability to use it in that manner.
All right, any other comments or discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you to Memorial Presbyterian Church, and thank you to all the other donors.
There's one more piece for information, because it's a gift, so it's not cash value there, but we also had donated a clarinet, two music stands, and a French horn case from Ms. Robin Glenn.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving into item seven, which is human resources. Do you want to take this?
Janet's now doing those.
Oh, sorry, Janet.
That's okay. The following staff members announced their retirement effective as of these dates. Beverly Charbonneau, a paraprofessional at Woodcrest, is effective June 14th of 18. Deborah Morganstern, a paraprofessional at HH Dow High School, December 31st, 2017. And the board and staff extend their deepest sympathies to the family of Mark Pobosik, who passed away on October 23rd, 2017. Mr. Pobosik was a teacher at Jefferson for 17 years, retiring in 2014. Actually, he worked at Central for a couple of years, because I worked at Central with him, and he was kind of, I think he was in elementary too somewhere. Too bad.
Yeah, no, it's such a shock, because my kids were both there at Jefferson when he was there.
Yeah, it's too bad.
All right, moving into item eight, which is correspondence to and from the Board of Education, as recorded in the agenda. 8.2 is information, letters to the Board of Education. Nine is scheduled activities. So note that our next and last regularly scheduled board meeting of 2017 will be December 18th, and at this time, we will move into study discussion. And, okay, I think, do you have the slips of paper? The Board of Education Officer Nominating Committee? Okay, why don't we go through this, and then we can do that as part, or do you want me to? Okay, that's what I thought. We'll go into our discussion, and you can find seven slips of paper. All right, so Brad, I will start with you on the hearing from board members.
I just wanted to say thank you to Penny, Christie, and Jackie for their presentation. And Christie did mention that they're having great success, but it's only in pockets right now. So I think that we, as a board and a district, need to be ready to plan and prepare, help them with grants, and also budget line items in the future, when they know that, how to target this money, and how to improve their training, and get more of their message out there, and help all of our children, that I think to deepen their pockets, we might have to deepen their pockets. Just for awareness. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary?
Congratulations to our speaker there that came up and asked a question. I think it's a, I think it's a really important question, and I would reiterate again that you should contact our legislature and the governor, you know? And it's easy to do online, because I've done it. So please do. Good meeting. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, I had the pleasure of attending the Michigan Association School Board Conference the last week? I don't know, recently here. And always interesting, always a good chance to talk with board members from here and other districts. Did some good classes, learned, I think I've always learned a bunch, it's always good to come back. I voluntarily sat through a couple of finance classes on bond and bond work and how all that works, and it was good, it was informational, and I think Mike's letter last Friday mentioned about our, our district's credit rating being upgraded to an A+. And it's another way of how our fund balance allows us to save money in ways you don't always think of. So I think that is encouraging to hear. And looking, looks like, if I'm correct, Plymouth and Woodcrest will be wrapping up here soon?
They're Phase One.
Correct, Phase One.
Yep. So at that point, they'll hand over those newly built areas, but then, of course, take over.
Correct.
The old areas, and then they'll be all done, their goal is to be done, Bob end of May, before school probably lets out. Although, they're proud of that, and they want us to kind of move there, but with a few weeks to go, I don't know that's really going to happen, but.
Okay.
Because it just may not be worth it to move at that point, but yes, it sounds like me.
Hopefully, parents and students are ready at the, for the next round at Seabert and Chestnut Hill, which is to be the next round improvements coming, so looking forward to seeing, seeing all that.
I bet you are.
For multiple reasons, yes. I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Scott? Oh, who is also looking forward to the next round?
It was a great presentation tonight about the school mental health. For me, it was kind of eye-opening, because it is a very real issue in our schools, not only locally, but on a regional and national level, and it's a problem that, you know, students deal with and teachers and administrators deal with daily. The statistics are staggering. You know, 80% nationally go untreated and unidentified. The good news is, is we are really charging forward here to help these kids out, to make progress into trailblazers, in a sense, like you put it, to get the treatment, to get the training, to get the identification processes and procedures in place. So I was really happy to see the progress that they've made to that end. To all of you, you guys can start a movement here. Help us help you. You guys need to contact our legislators, and it's beating a dead horse, I know, and you were very brave to come up and do that, and we all appreciate it. But you can see the power that you have. If all of you left and had 10 of your friends make a phone call or write a letter, that's a big thing, and you can start a movement throughout our district, and hopefully beyond that, to get the legislation passed that we really need to have passed. So that's really all I wanted to emphasize tonight, and thank you all for sticking with us.
We should write a letter to Mr. Starling to see if he'd accept.
But only to one of you. Oh, you mean for, for writing. I just thought you meant for speaking and bringing it to the, to everybody's forefront.
I agree with you. The presentation tonight was great, and we do need to focus on the social-emotional pieces for our kids, and so many, a big kudos to the schools and what we have done and partnered with community mental health and so many of the other agencies to help address this problem, and that's one thing I'm very proud of the district, is we have a lot of people who are engaged and ready to jump on board to help move this forward, so. And Mr. Shero has been on board for, from the go, from the get-go, so that's been wonderful. I guess I would challenge all of us, all the students out there, and all the parents, that it's not just a school, it's not a school issue, it's a community issue. It is every one of us. It is every parent, every aunt, uncle, grandparent, and student. And when we see someone struggling, we can't always look to teachers to solve it. We need to look at ourselves and see what kind of difference we can make with each one of these kids in our community. So I just encourage us all to take a harder look at that. Another thing, speaking of strong social-emotional skills, it wasn't long ago where we approved a book, Wonder, here, and now there's a PBS special about Wonder. Have anyone seen? I've, I've heard great reviews about it, and it just, also, the movie is out, and everyone is talking about the book, and it really addresses some of those social-emotional strengths and how we can just be better friends. On another note, Patrick, the MS, MASP conference was fabulous. We were up every morning at 7:30 in the morning, and we didn't get out of class until 9:30 at night, and that was Thursday through Saturday. So got home at midnight Saturday night, but it was well worth it, and we had a lot of great breakout sessions, a lot of classes that we went to, and I would highly encourage board members to go next year, because we really get a lot out of it every year, and it's important. Dow High had a glow event that was a super success and giving back to the community, and I think they were really taken in that we message that we're partnering with Dow Chemical on the we movement. So it was great to see the students really embrace that. And then Midland High had their own day where they honored the veterans, and that was just a wonderful thing to see our schools do. That's all I have.
Well, I agree, it's a great, great meeting, great time of year. Thank you, students. There's a lot of you here today. So, and Haley, for being brave to come up, and I'll just echo what everyone else said, and they talked about this even at our conference. It's so important for you and parents and community members to contact legislators. They said school board members and administrators can, but you are the ones that really have the power. So if you can do that, get on your email and, or your phone, and give them a call and let them know what you think about the different issues. And thanks for being here tonight. I was pretty moved by our shining stars again tonight. It just shows what goes on in our schools that most people don't notice, but it's an everyday thing, there are always people reaching out and giving, and I think that with, with the topic of discussion tonight on the school, from the school mental health group, you know, we're making great strides, and, and there are great things going on, but we are a little bit. bit ahead of the game, because we saw a lot of, some vendors and discussion about that at the conference. So there's different kinds of curriculum and, and guidelines out there, so it's exciting to know that we are already making efforts to help our students. Let's see, what else I have here? Yeah, there's so many schools. Pam touched on the glow dance, but I saw there was a penny drive, and there's been food collections and all kinds of things going on, and what a generous community we have. And it's starting at such a young level, our age, that hopefully these will continue and be life skills that all these students carry on in their adult lives. Alice in Wonderland, I went the other night. Dow High performed that, and our own Midland High graduate Gina Kirley actually wrote that and helped direct it. So I knew her when she was just a young girl, so it was fun to go see that, and I believe Rhapsody rendezvous is coming up next. So I always look forward to that. So you are all so talented. And Thanksgiving is Thursday, so I'm sure you're all ready for a little break, and enjoy it. Well deserved.
All right, well, I think most people touched on most everything, except I do need to send a shout-out to the Dow High girls swim team that finished ninth in the state Saturday. I think it might be the last fall sport to wrap up, so congratulations to that team. And feel-good story I saw on Facebook a few weeks ago, but I kind of kept it in mind. So with both of our high schools out of the football championship series, there was a large, it was actually a pretty large group of Dow High kids that went over to Grand Rapids one night to watch a former student from Dow High who had to transfer for his senior year over to Grand Rapids, and a huge group of them went over to support him in his playoff game the following week after both Dow and Midland were out. And I just, I don't know, it kind of touched me, because I thought for them to do that and to go support a former student in his new school, I thought was touching. So congratulations to the shining stars. Both my kids had Julie Valano, so we know her and like her, and she was great as an English teacher, and now she is administrator. That is all I have for that. I think at this time, I will hand out for the nominating, if that's good, and then we'll turn it over to you why we do that. So a couple of you have not been here for this part before, you're probably at the meeting last year, though, where we did this. So what we do is every, at this time every year, we, amongst the seven of us, elect three of us to serve as the nominating committee for the, well, this will be for the 2018 board year, and that group of three are the three that sit down and figure out the slate, the officer slate, and a lot of the committee positions, and, you know, the whole, how everything gets divided up. So what we do is everyone gets a slip of paper, check your three, everybody's name is on here, check your three, put it up here, you can fold it, and Cindy will collect them, tally them, and at the end, or when she has it done, she will give it to me. I will let you know. The three people then get together outside of a regular meeting. All right. There you go. This time all.
I can speak while you're writing.
Yep, that's, that's what I figured, see, I'm trying to multitask here.
I wrote to you a little bit about our energy incentives, and I want to give Mike Mogulberg a lot of credit here. Mike works very hard on these rebates, and you saw the history there where we have a significant number of rebates. And I think we're up to four buildings that received the energy star as well, so that's a really nice flowback to the district, and we've been depositing that money for future facilities. As we know, we got continued to work that we're going to need to do, bring our facilities up to where we'd like them to be over time, above the bond work as we go. As Patrick mentioned, S&amp;P Global does a review of our credit every couple of years, I think, but I think they're getting ready as well, because we're probably about a year out from selling Series Two, or six months out, I think. And so they review your credit ratings as we go. As you know, we've made great progress, but it was nice to hear an organization like that. And the voicemail message was probably more flattering than the new, the letter, but they were quite surprised of the turnaround that we had, and we, as we know, I don't think we ever projected that we'd build our fund balance, probably double in that short period of time and higher than we ever wanted. So we've been moved to an A+ rating, which last time with our A rating, we had, we used the state's rating, because the state's rating was actually higher than ours. And so that may be the case, not the case this time going forward, which allows you to sell your bonds at a more attractive rate and better to the taxpayers. Not, doesn't bring more money into us, but it'll pay off their debt quicker for the taxpayers as we go. Enrollment, we're really close to certifying the numbers any day, so we're always very cautious. If you remember, I was a little more early last year on you a little bit, and so I'm not going to do that again, but it looks like we're about 50 students above budget at this point in time, which would put us near the same enrollment we had last year, despite the two high schools going smaller classes and getting significantly smaller. So again, as we've talked about, that's been a nice problem to have at the elementary, but it's also cost of classroom space issues that we'll talk about as we go forward. Open carry, we talked about that tonight, and so I won't go into great detail, but send the bills for 584 through 586 addressed with that. They've been approved. The expectation is when the House returns that they most likely will be approving. Hopefully, we've done some work, maybe that doesn't completely occur. And make sure you understand, I say this from somebody who is very much a con advocate, and myself, but from a school administrative standpoint, I don't believe this would be a good thing for us going forward. I liken it to, and I try to look at it and say, you know, after 9/11, if we had everyone carrying on planes, would that would make planes safer? Because that's really what they're saying. If schools had been the target, or public settings been the target, and if we just had people carrying guns, they wouldn't be the target, then why is that not true on planes? And we don't let everyone carry on planes, we license somebody who's carrying on that plane. And that's really where we should be going. It should be about security guards or paying for metal detectors, as you mentioned earlier, or, or let's put a liaison in every school in America. I think that's the better way of making safety as we go forward. So I think we need to work on that and hold out that Governor Snyder still stands where he stood two years ago when he vetoed going forward. County Enhanced Military, I wrote to you about that as well, two parts of that one. There is a bill that would allow charter schools to enact in that money as well, about $100,000 hit for us. The issue that I really have with it more than anything is, I'm sure when our voters approved that milit, they meant to tax themselves to spend more on educating Midland County students. And approximately, the enrollment at the, our charter schools are 40 to 50% non-Midland County residents. And so you're now sending Midland County residents to educate students outside of our county, and I think they need to fix that loophole. And that's where I've been pushing significantly hard on our legislators, with some deaf ears at this point in time, so not, not real good there. It is becoming time where we have to renew our Enhanced Military. If you recall, when I first came in, we discovered it was a very short timeline, and I pushed hard, so we got it on the ballot before we, we didn't have a collection. You always like a buffer election date, meaning if you weren't successful, you still are collecting, and you could go back and try to re-educate the community why this is important and do so. And so we are looking, and it has to be, make sure you understand, we may be the largest 70% of the portion, but this is ESA-driven, it's county-wide driven, they're the, they're the ones that can request. So we're working with our ESA. We're probably going to request two election dates for approval, August of 2018 and November of 2018. And so if you're successful in August, you'd be done. You pull it back for November, if not, you could go back in November and educate them. Both are election dates, whether there are other things on the ballot, state or national, if you recall how that works, but state or national, we don't foot the bill. And so August is the primary, November's of 18th, the governor election year, so that's good as well. 31A and literacy grant funds, some very nice, exciting news, and using our resources, target it at our interventions and our gaps and our goals. And so 625,000 supplementary funds went to, into our 10 schools for at-risk students, another 114,000 went into literacy grant funds to provide interventions in literacy for our youngest learners, K through three for the third grade initiative. And so we, 512,000 were 31A funds as well, so really nice money, and we hope to continue to close our achievement gap as we go forward with that piece. Mentioned earlier, Woodcrest and Plymouth nearing completion on Phase One. If you recall, at Woodcrest, and Mary and Brad may not, because it may have been before you guys, I don't remember if we did or not, but we, we decided that Woodcrest had this item, they had four sections at every grade level, but with one grade level of three, which causes a problem. We kind of helped maybe by not approving school of choice and maybe the draw at Center Park, that wouldn't be an issue, and we got enrollment, we realized it wasn't, you guys weren't here by then, and it wasn't going to work. And so when we began to look at adding a classroom onto there, we realized that the STEM maker space, where it was at, was probably a better classroom, and then we could add a STEM maker space. So they have the classroom already, but now with the addition is the STEM maker space. And so that is out to bid, those numbers will come back to you, FFO to the board, that's coming to you to be prepared for as well. We think we can cover that through contingency funds and cost savings through there, so that's good news. We think we can afford it without having any change throughout that as well. First Robotics, it's just, you know, grown, grown, grown robotics. We're the number one state in the nation now, and governors put money in that area. Of course, Dow High led the charge here.
Charge.
And they led the hot here, and the Midland High grew, and then we grew into our middle schools and our elementary tree, Carpenter's going to become a, part of it's going to become First Robotics. And so I think with all that hubbub of Midland, I got invited to be on the steering committee because the Worlds are coming to Detroit. And so I feel a little bit lost, to be honest. I sat on the first couple of meetings, the robotics world's a little beyond a superintendent, but they want that, that superintendent on that committee, so I'm flattered to be on it, and I'll represent as the best I can on that one as well. New upgrades, so I just went through our fall upgrades with our consultant, and I always kind of have to wait on him a little bit, so if you wonder why it's fall, but we're getting close to winter, he's been here now for we could review. It goes into the system, and our committee meets first of December, and then it'll be coming to you for full approval as we go forward. Pretty simple update this time through, going forward. I have one other one if I recall. Dow High, so Dow High has reached out and is requesting to raise funds to improve their stadium complex, and they have multiple phases on this, and so I think at least the agenda group met the other day with them were pretty comfortable with at least them seeking Phase One, you know, going forward, and we'll see where the rest goes. Now Phase One mainly is like turf and eventually lights, which we definitely could use that turf extra space in the district anyway going forward. I, a little worried a little bit that, as we know, community stadium needs lots of work, and a little worried a little bit about the condition of those stands and what that's going to cost. If you remember, that bond work was all signed before the condition of the stands, so I think we got some tough decisions made there, and we're getting real close to bringing that to you. But even when we're done with the bond work, there probably wasn't enough funds in that community stadium as it's aged out, and so I actually found, I think Bob maybe gave it to me a while back, where they raised funds in the 80s for that stadium, and maybe time to do that again, if we want to make that what we need to be. You know, if that stadium was on a neutral piece of land, the Dow High Midland High thing would not be an issue, but it is an issue, and we need to recognize it, that we're just not going to get full buy-in from this community. And so I think I kind of support this a little bit at Dow High. I worry about long range from the district supporting two facilities, and that's probably what drove the decision of one originally, but it's probably time to look at that. But I'm certainly going to leave that up to you guys, but we'll bring that to you guys and you look at that, but that's kind of where I stand, I think, at this point with that piece of it. They have multiple phases, it's a big ticket if they actually were going after all of that, but they're asking, I think, more to go after Phase One. So that will go to FFO in December, and then make the December board meeting for you guys, just a, your kind of gift, given your blessing, if you're okay with them going forward, trying to raise funds out there for that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. So, a couple of things here before we go into closed session. First, Cindy did a quick tally, and so the nominating committee for 2018 will be Pam and Patrick and myself. So we will meet, but before then, at some point, I'll get with you, Cindy, we will send out to everybody the form where you, you know, fill out and put, show what your interests are, and it's, a lot of times happen with that, you know, a lot of interest in one area and not in another, so decisions, you know, are then made. All right, we have that. The next thing, we are going to be voting to go into closed session to, at Mike's request, to work on his evaluation for this year. And so the first thing is, for all the students, I know a lot of you, we signed your forms. I don't know if there's anybody else that needs a form signed. After we elect to go into closed session, please come up here and we will sign it before you leave, so don't be worried that you'll miss a sign in it, because you certainly don't want to stay while we're in closed session, because I'm not sure how long this will go. So the next thing we need to do is, we do have a limit in how long board meetings can go. I have a feeling we will go past that this evening, and so we need to vote right now to extend the time, so that we've taken care of that out of the equation. So I do not know how long this is going to take. I would propose maybe a 10:30, just to make sure to give us the window that we need. Not that I want to go that long, but I certainly don't want to run into something ahead of time, so.
I move to adjust the adjournment time from 9:30 until such time that we complete our meeting, but go no later than 10:30.
All right.
Support.
All right, thank you.
Angela, I think you need to mention that there will be no action taken tonight.
Oh, yes.
The only, the only action when we come out of closed session
Right.
is to close the meeting.
Yes.
That the actual evaluation is acted upon and presented upon in December.
Yes, so in December, we will come back with everything that was discussed tonight. So yes, when we come back into session, it will just be to come back in open session and adjourn the meeting. So there will be no other business that will take place after that time. Back to this, though, I had, moved by Pam, supported by Scott. Is there any discussion? All right, so all those in favor of extending our meeting time till a maximum of 10:30, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. This time.
Motion.
Motion, yeah.
Close session?
Yep.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Mary to go into closed session?
Second.
All right. Support by Pam. All those, or any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, at this time, we will move into closed session. Like I said, if anyone needs a sign, please come up here.